May I call the meeting of the Parsippany Troy Hills Board of Education to order on June 18th, 2025. In compliance with Chapter 231 Public Law 1975 entitled Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided as specified in the act in the following manner. A meeting notice was published in the newspaper and on the district website on January 8th, 2025. In addition, the notice of the meeting was posted at the municipal building in the schools and a copy of the notice filed with the township clerk and transmitted to other newspapers on June 10th, 2025. The Daily Record, the Star Ledger, Parsippany Focus, Tap into Parsippany Patch, and the district website. This regular public board meeting is being video recorded as per bylaw 168. The recordings of these meetings will be available on our district website and our Video on the Go YouTube channel. We ask that you please refrain from using student or staff names in your statement. Professionalism is expected at all times. May we have the roll call, please? Mrs. Abraham?
Here.
Mr. Barrios?
Here.
Mr. DeVito?
Here.
Mrs. Mayer?
Here.
Mr. Raya?
Here.
Mrs. Chappell?
Here.
Dr. Wright?
Here.
Mr. Chaffo?
Here.
Mrs. Cogan?
Here.
Please stand for the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, now it's time for our student committee reports, but no students, right? Okay. School is very close to out. I don't blame them at all. At this time, I'm going to suspend tonight's regular agenda to allow for presentations and our very first thing on the bulletin, which is going to be pulled out separately. Over the past seven months, our board has spent many hours and evenings going through the process of finding a new superintendent, as Dr. Sutter provided us plenty of notice that he would be retiring. I want to thank our consultant Kathleen Helawa, Ms. Benos, and definitely my fellow board members who took this responsibility very professionally and seriously. We are happy to have concluded the search, and the first item on the bulletin is our selected candidate. We have a press release ready to go out with additional information, but I am confident that she will be a welcome addition to our strong administrative team, and we look forward to welcoming her over the next several months. Can I have a motion for this item on the bulletin? Mrs. Mayer, and a second. Dr. Wright, is there any other discussion before we take a vote? Okay. Can we have the roll call? Dr. Wright?
Yes.
Mrs. Chappell?
Yes.
Mr. Raya?
Yes.
Mrs. Mayer?
Yes.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Mr. Barrios?
Recues?
Mrs. Abraham?
Epstein.
Mr. Chaffo?
Yes.
Mrs. Cogan?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Dr. Chase, I believe, is here. Would you like to say something?
Well, thank you for the Board of Education, for the opportunity to lead this wonderful district. Just so everyone knows, I'm delighted to be here. I was able to meet with the board over several appointments, and during that time, I was able to really understand how much you all care about this district and the time you all give to the work of supporting the success of students, so that made it very attractive for me to come here, so thank you for that. I also had the opportunity to meet with Dr. Sutter today, who was so gracious of his time, and I want to thank you and congratulate you on your next chapter as well. I'm very interested and eager to get started here in the district. I know that Parsippany is a great district, having spent much of my career nearby in Montville Township or just kind of paralleling up against the work being done here, and I know the ship is sailing very smoothly, and there's a lot of great work happening with the team, so my job is going to be to listen, to learn, to hear about the great things that are happening, and then also try to find some ways where we can continue to harness some of the talent that's in the district, and I'm just very excited to get started. So thank you again for your trust. I look forward to working with all of you.
And now we will have the presentation of student awards. After the awards, we will break for congratulations and cookies and punch. Dr. Sutter?
I just want to welcome everybody that's coming here tonight and want to congratulate all the students that are winning awards, and I want to wish everybody a pleasant summer. So without any further ado, let's turn it over to Dr. Mulrooney.
Right. I'd like to call Mrs. Abraham and Mrs. Chappell to help with the word presentation. Mr. Gray, the CMS principals here. Ms. Stout was unable to attend tonight, so...
Her graduation.
Oh, to her son's graduation. That's an excused absence, guys. It's in the handbook, all right? So we're going to recognize a ton of really, really talented and dedicated middle school musicians, and we're really excited to do so, so when I call your name, come forward to receive your award and get your hand shaken enthusiastically, all right? I did a little homework today to try to get all of your pronunciations correct, and I'm confident that I'm 99% there, so if there are any mistakes, I really apologize because names are important, and we want to get those right. But congratulations to all of you, and without any further ado, we're going to recognize the New Jersey Music Educators Association Intermediate All-State Orchestra, cello, Jeffrey Lee. So I guess some of these are elementary as well. North Jersey School Music Association Elementary Honors Association, cello, Arav Agarwal. Bass, Aman Edmonds Basak. It's hectic. It's scary when you come up, right? North Jersey School Music Association Intermediate Region Choir, soprano I, LaHaire Desai. Was it able to confirm? Oh, another picture? Wasn't able to confirm this pronunciation, but Zainab Dayakiti. Next, we have the North Jersey Music Association Region One Treble Choir. Next, North Jersey School Music Association Region One Mixed Choir, Damir Albadark. And our last group, the North Jersey Music School Association Elementary Band Festival, And lastly, Iris, Ariz, sorry, Shuffler. Ariz Shuffler. Congratulations, all of our recognized musicians.
Okay, so we'll take a 10-minute recess right now?
Yeah.
Okay, we're going to get out of break and come back to our meeting. We are up to correspondence. Is there any correspondence to come before the board?
No, there's not.
Is there any unfinished business to come before the board? Mr. Raya?
Yes. Robin, I just wanted to, on behalf of the board, I just wanted to say, you know, to acknowledge that you're going to be leaving us, and the last two years, your artful navigation with the budgets has been instrumental in closing big problems, and it is well appreciated. Your counsel has been well appreciated. You know, we could just make a phone call and, you know, and resolve questions that we had. You're always calm and cool, and...
You don't see me all day running around.
Well, maybe, but when you get here, you're calm and cool. So, but on behalf of the board, we'd just like to thank you. We have a small token of our appreciation, and so thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. I've worked here for many years, and I'm thankful that I had you guys. Thank you.
And you won't miss running around in here.
I still run around. I just be somewhere else.
She's missing next to me, is what she's really good at.
That is true. We talked about this already.
That's a tough one.
All right, committee reports. Mr. Barrios?
Thank you, Madam President. The Policy Committee met on June 11th. In attendance, myself, Ms. Chappell, Mr. DeVito via the phone, and Dr. Mulrooney and Ms. Benos. We had a review of the following policies. Policy 5350, student suicide prevention, it was revised policy, and policy number 8467 was firearms and weapon, that was revised, and then there's the firearms and weapon. There was a new for the... It'll be placed on the June 18th bulletin. I do think we had an outstanding question to go to our attorney, but I don't think that was going to hold up from the reading, so... If that is my... Any questions? That's my report.
No questions on the policies? Okay. Personnel, Mrs. Mayer?
Thank you. Personnel met on June 10th. Present were myself, Mrs. Abraham, Dr. Wright, President Cogan, Mr. Rickert, and Joni Benos. There were some confidential matters discussed. The job descriptions were reviewed, and the following job descriptions are added to our bulletin today. The head bus driver and transportation mechanic, there's new job description. Then there's visual performing arts and humanities. That program has gotten so big that they needed to kind of split it a little bit and establish, you know, some kind of supervision. Mr. Rickert went over the comprehensive equity plan, and it was really quite a deal for him to do. He had to go through the whole thing and make sure everything was what it should be, and, you know, make sure everything was... I's were dotted, T's were crossed. The treasurer consultant position for the '25-'26 school year was discussed, and that is my report.
Thank you. Any questions? All right, are there any liaison reports?
Hold on. I have buildings and grounds. I can kind of talk about what we...
Would you like to do buildings and grounds?
I mean, just to go high level, because we didn't really have notes, because we just met tonight, so... Yeah, so building is grounds met early this evening. In attendance were myself, Mr. Barrios, Dr. Wright, Mr. Tesco, and Ms. Benos. We met with our architects, Parit Somjen, and they reviewed some updates of the various projects we have going on. I think if you could, Ms. Benos, share that with the rest of the board at a later time. I don't want to go into detail of it, but we had an race of comprehensive discussions with them, so...
Thank you.
It's our report for the meeting.
Liaison reports. Mrs. Chappell?
So on Tuesday, we ESC met, where we did the reorg. I'm very proud to announce that I was elected again to the Board of Directors, so very happy about that. We went through the normal reorg items, but in addition, at the end, we discussed topics that we wanted to share and hear about at the upcoming county meeting, and some of the hottest topics that were raised were the cell phone absenteeism and the impact of construction or pilot programs across our county, so looking forward to hearing more about that at that meeting.
All right. Any questions for Mrs. Chappell? All right, any other liaison reports? Okay, I was able to attend part of the Professional Development Day. The main presenter was really wonderful, and then I watched the mini grant presentations, and I'm always impressed with what the staff does to go above and beyond with very little extra money, so those are always very nice. We've had several moving up ceremonies already. Thank you to the board members for attending. I know I like seeing all the happy families and being reminded of all the learning the students are doing besides the core subjects, and it's great to see how much the staff at each school really care about each of the kids. It really comes across in those ceremonies, so that's always nice. Okay, so now we are up...
Miss Cogan, if I just comment on that a bit?
Go ahead.
So I was, yeah, I was able to attend two moving ups, Intervale and Eastlake, and in addition to the, a very professional way, they get through the whole process and get it all done in a short period of time with a lot of kids. When they decorate it, I think they always have their PTAs do a lot of work to try and make it decorated nice and make it look nice, and Eastlake was outside, and other than the noise from the construction of the warehouse behind it, it was very smooth and very nice, and the weather was clear, and Intervale has theirs indoors, and it was very nice as well, so I agree. Thank you.
Okay, so we are up to approval of minutes for the regular and executive minutes of June 5th, 2025. May I have a motion? Mr. DeVito, and a second. Mrs. Chappell, roll call. Mrs. Abraham?
Yes.
Mr. Barrios?
Yes.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Mrs. Mayer?
Yes.
Mr. Raya?
Yes.
Mrs. Chappell?
Yes.
Dr. Wright?
Yes.
Mr. Chaffo?
Yes.
Mrs. Cogan?
Yes.
Superintendent Bulletin, number 21, Dr. Sutter.
Okay. Before I begin, I would once again like to welcome Dr. Chase to the Parsippany Troy Hills School District. I had the pleasure of speaking with Dr. Chase prior to our meeting, and I believe her vision will lead the district forward, and I wish her nothing but good luck. I would also like to acknowledge our new business administrator, Steve. I don't know if everybody knows Mr. McHugh. Dr. McHugh, would you please wave there? I had the pleasure of working with Steve for the past few weeks, and I believe Steve will continue the excellence in fiscal leadership the district has become accustomed to under Mrs. Tedesco. Good luck, Steve.
Thanks, man.
As I prepare to step into retirement, I do so with a heart full of gratitude and deep appreciation for the incredible journey I have shared in the Parsippany Troy Hills School District. Serving as your Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources and currently as a Superintendent of Schools has truly been one of the greatest honors of my life. I am profoundly thankful to the Board of Education for their unwavering support, understanding, honesty, and most of all, your trust. I have heard it said that trust is built on telling the truth, not telling people what they want to hear, and I firmly agree. We have had uncomfortable conversations due to the truth, but I would have it no other way. I have said this on many occasions in private, but I want to say it publicly, I value each member of this board, and I don't think you get enough credit for the volunteer service you provide for your community. Moreover, your professionalism and friendship are something I don't take lightly. My decisions were always based on what is best for our students, our staff, and your community. I want each of you to know that I never lost sight of how my decisions and recommendations would affect your daily lives as residents of Parsippany Troy Hills. I took my job to heart, and I never wanted to disappoint the Board of Education. I want you each to know that I value the friendship we have developed over the years, and I only hope we can remain friends. I wish each of you and your families nothing but health and happiness. To the families and members of our community, thank you for your trust, your engagement, and your belief in the power of education. Together, we have built more than just programs and policies. We have built relationships rooted in mutual respect and shared hopes for our children's futures. The friendships I have formed throughout the journey are treasures I will carry with me always. It has been a privilege to witness the growth and the strength of this district, and I leave with complete confidence in the people who will lead it forward. To our senior cabinet members, administrators, teachers, and support staff who have worked tirelessly every day to help shape the minds and hearts of our students, you have been the backbone of this district's success. Your dedication, resilience, and compassion inspired me and filled my days and weeks and months and years with pride and purpose. To our departing interim VA, Robin, you have taught me the true meaning of professionalism. Your work ethic is only matched by your loyalty, and you are a dear friend. I will miss the friendship we built. Just to repeat once again, under Robin's financial stewardship, the district was awarded the Certificate of Excellence for the June 30th, 2024 audit. Robin, your best.
Thank you.
Also, I would be remiss if I did not extend my heartfelt thanks to our Board of Education attorney, Ms. Kate Gilflyn. Kate, your steadfast support, wise counsel, and unwavering professionalism were invaluable to me throughout my tenure. More than that, your friendship has become a true gift, one I will always cherish. Thank you for walking beside me through the challenges and the triumphs. In closing, I want to express a special thank you and personal thank you to Ms. Joni Benos, my trusted friend and unwavering supporter. Your guidance, encouragement, and friendship have been an essential part of my journey and success. I could not have done this job without you by my side. As I say goodbye, I do not want you to say it with sadness, but with immense gratitude and joy for all we have accomplished together. Thank you for the memories, the lessons, and the love the district, and each of you will always hold a special place in my heart. Remember, a goodbye isn't painful unless you're never going to say hello again, so take care of everyone. Tonight, for your approval, we have superintendent bulletin items 1 through 56, with the denim read, and items 57 through 98.
And we're supposed to just move on after that? Okay.
That's that. We're going forward. Ripping off the rearview mirror, that's it.
All right. Are there any questions on the superintendent's bulletin? Mr. DeVito?
I'm going to start, because I think we're going to be going around the room here. Bob, I want to thank you for your willingness to take on the role of our district superintendent in a time when there was much uncertainty. I believe your calm demeanor reassured many of our teachers and staff, who over the years have come to trust and respect you. It was a big role that you stepped in to fill, and for I, for one, appreciate it. To say you will be missed is an understatement. You truly did the best you could to do a good job, and in my humble opinion, you achieved it. I'm going to miss you, Bob.
Thanks, Matt. Appreciate that.
I think I learned so much from you, and you all know I'm a big nerd, and so learning is one of my favorite things, and some of the things I feel like I've learned is, one, you know, what does the practice of integrity look like in action? Seeing how you deal with people, people when you, you know, whether, no matter what people came to you with, you stayed consistent and true in a way that is deeply admirable. At the same time, you are incredibly competent.
Well, thank you. I appreciate it.
This is something, you know, with, I've worked with complex bureaucracies my entire adult life. I'm a deeply public employee, and your level of just being able to do the thing and lead others to do the things is deeply rare, and so I want to shine a light on someone who can just handle their business.
Well, thanks, my dear. I really appreciate it.
And the last thing is, I know you didn't want to make a big deal, I just want to say I really admire your humility. You know, you have been able to kind of sense and say, like, you know, you're not all-knowing, and work through the world with that, and have a just real sense of humbleness that is a real role model. I really admire you.
Thanks, my dear. I miss you. Great job on board.
I really appreciate your genuineness. Everything about you is real. I have never had any other experience. I've never seen you act in any other way, and I think that's the thing that I like most about you, I admire most about you, and I can't say that about everybody I encounter in my life. You've had a true profound impact on the district and everyone you've worked with here, and we are so grateful for you.
Thanks, Michelle. I miss you.
I don't want to make this a messy moment, but...
You don't have to, Matt. You can move on from that.
No. I'm going to do this. It's been, we've been through it.
There we have it.
You know, it's, I don't know how many years, it just seems like...
162 board meetings. But who's count?
And I remember when you first came into the district, and I watched, and I learned, and, you know, one of the things that, as I was preparing myself for tonight, I was thinking that what I've learned over time is that there are people who are not good to their word, but your word is your bond, and you've never... never misled. If you didn't know, you said so. If you didn't agree, you said so. You had that moment, like all of us, where you've been frustrated, and you let us know that, hey, I'm frustrated with this. And it was the humanness about that. There was no pretending. There was no putting a silly face on. So, you know, you, you let us know, you, you ran this district to the best of your ability. And I think I said this before, and I'm gonna say it again. I'm personally going to miss you, but I'm glad you were here because this district is better off because you were. So thank you.
Thank you, Tim. I really enjoyed your company and enjoy your friendship, and I appreciate all you do for the district and this board. You're a good, very good community member.
Does anybody over there like to speak?
Yeah, I'll chime in. Um, Bob, you, you have been an unwavering compass for us, uh, for the, for the whole district. You came in, you know, when you did, and it was, uh, you know, we just, we just knew we were in the right direction. But, you know, you led us in the right direction, and, and everything has been well, you know, it's, and it's, it's still been very challenging, you know? We're coming, you know, even though we're out of COVID, it's still lingers, you know, aspects of it linger, and, and we are, but you have been, you have been a happy warrior dealing with that. And, and I'm going to miss, um, I'm gonna miss the truck coming by and see it on the Brooklawn Drive in the morning when I'm coming back from running. And, uh, you know, we have a little chat in the morning, and, and I'm gonna miss that. But, uh, but thank you for everything that you've done for the district, and, uh, and all the best in your future endeavors.
Thanks, Jack. It was a pleasure getting to know you, and I wish you and your family, especially your wife, nothing but health and happiness.
Thank you.
Well, I've never been known to be off the cuff, so I always have something prepared. Bob, simply you are beloved. You came into this role without hesitation at a crucial time and took it on with enthusiasm and courage, and led this district wonderfully. This district is in a better place because of you, and my only wish is that your time with us was longer. You've been so easy to talk to, so approachable, so relatable, so trustworthy, honest, caring, and so damn hilarious. We never had to wonder how you felt, because you always told us openly, and we felt that we could also express ourselves freely in return. I cannot tell you how much that is appreciated, because those attributes are hard to find and even harder to replace. As excited as I am for your new chapter in life, filled with laughter, family time, good health, and adventures, I'm also sad to see you go. You've been a breath of fresh air to everyone in this district and community, and you'll be dearly missed. When I jokingly said, hey, Bob, why didn't you greet me like that one time? You made sure to greet me from that moment on, every single time, with a big smile, a wave, and a "Hey, Sheethel," which always made me laugh. I sincerely believe, I sincerely believe you had that same personal, unique relationship with almost everyone you encountered. We may not remember everything we talked about or did, but we will never forget how you made us feel important, supported, and understood, and that is something to cherish. I wish you nothing but the best in your next chapter of life, and I hope you'll keep in touch. And you may be retired, but there will be times we'll still reach out to you for advice or just to chat, and I hope you don't mind. So thank you.
Oh, thank you, Sheethel. It was a pleasure meeting you. And again, it was, it's, we've had a fun time, and, and, you know, teasing is, is part of life, and you're a good sport.
Well, now, you know, it's interesting. As you were reading, a lot of people were tearing up. And I have to tell you, I have never seen that reaction to any other superintendent who's leaving this district. We were like, bye-bye.
Well, I'm glad I'm not getting booted out.
Which says a lot, how deeply saddened we are that you're leaving. I know when you announced that you were leaving, people were just devastated that you were leaving. He's a good guy. He's a straight shooter. You know, he looks out for us. You, you have done it all. I, I'm not gonna repeat what everybody says. Remember, I voted no to the bulletin when you were in the bulletin. But you know how I feel. I, I enjoyed working with you when I was on personnel, and you were on personnel, and you'd call up, and we'd share information, and you were very thorough. You wanted, you know, an opinion, what do you think? I'm doing this. You were always meticulous in what you, when you made a decision. And your good humor. I mean, I, I am going to miss those stories about Vincent, about the body on the tracks. I mean, I don't know if there's gonna be anybody who's...
Therapist is gonna love it.
Gonna entertain us as much. But, you know, and I will miss you saying, what's happening, Mrs. Mayor? That's always how you greet me. But Bob, you know, I am sorry to see you go. I really hope that you'll keep in touch with us, because you have a lot of friends in Parsippany.
This place is good. I tell you, we, we built a great relationship, Judy. You're, you really care about the community, as does everybody else on this board. And your perspective as a teacher was really helpful for me, uh, to get to know everybody and, and really to, to get a pulse of what was happening. So without you, there would be no success.
Thank you.
Do you want me to talk next?
No, I don't need you.
Well, you know how I feel, Bob. I mean, we've worked together closely since 2016. I can't believe you're retiring, but I'm leaving too, so.
We've had a good run. I only wish that most people can develop the relationships that we developed.
Right, we did. Yes. Thank you for everything. You definitely helped me, especially in 2016 and 17. Those were tough years coming back.
They were tough.
They were. But we got through it.
Yeah, we did.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Oh, boy. Dr. Sutter. You know, I, I didn't know really what to say tonight. And I was, you know, sitting earlier thinking, maybe I'll do like a fruit and vegetable themed speech. So I started a couple of things, like, you know, you were excellent at this job, even though at times it drove you bananas. But you handled it with great aplomb, always keeping your, always keeping your peachy keen sense of humor. And, you know, let us congratulate you as you turn over a new leaf. But I didn't want to do that, because that just really sounds silly. Then I wrote a whole bunch of superlatives. Like, my whole phone is, is filled. I actually had to clear out some photos to have the memory able to, you know, fit all the writing of superlatives. But then I didn't want to spill your head, so I didn't, not gonna read all those. But I, I will just say the one superlative that I, I share with you, the one, the greatest thing that I think I've gotten out of our relationship is to be able to call you a friend. You, we have just developed a really good friendship over the time we've both been on this board. I will miss you sitting here, but I will say the pontoon boat is gassed, the coolers fill with ice and adult libations. So as soon as this is all over, let's do it, man. Yeah. Well, listen, I mean, uh, thank you, Andy. It, it's been a real pleasure. And I'll never forget the, the vote of confidence you gave me when I took this job. And it's just, uh, I, I will miss, I will miss you guys.
And, yeah, I don't want to, I know you didn't want a big thing, so I did not write a big speech, but you can tell by what everybody said, we all truly appreciate you and your efforts here, and your honesty, and your good faith, and we will definitely miss you. So...
Yeah. I mean, you were the, you were the original board members that hired me. So I, you know, Andy, Judy, Tim, it was, and, yeah, and Allison. You were the, the originals. So I'm, I'd be eternally grateful for you bringing me here. I mean, honestly, nothing else to say. I think it's all been said. I wish you guys nothing but the best, and I hope we can stay in touch. Hope we can all get up on Andy's pontoon boat.
Dr. Maruni?
I do. Yeah, yeah. Hello, Dr. Sutter. How are you?
Hanging in there, Dr. Maruni.
You're enjoying this, right?
Yeah, yeah. This is great.
This is fun. Good times.
All the attention.
Now, just from, from, as, as a colleague and a friend, I, I can say how much of an honor it's been working with you and for you. You, I think when you end your career, and you've been doing this like thirty, twenty-nine, thirty years? Since ninety-seven?
Twenty-eight.
All right. It's a good run as a, as a teacher, a coach, an administrator. I think when you can end all that, and, and people talk about you as a good person who did the right thing and worked hard, that's all you want to hear, man. You know, you did, did the right thing for kids and for teachers. Uh, so much of your job was unpleasant as an administrator, and you had to make tough decisions. And I think you, you handled those situations and treated people the right way with respect. And that's all you can really do is, is what's fair, um, when it's a, when it's a tough spot. And, um, you always did that. Um, I think, uh, you'd rather get it right than be right. And I think that's a really important way to be in life. So, I mean, I learned so much from you, and I'm gonna miss, uh, hashing out problems and, 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 you know, shooting the breeze with you, because you're just a good human being who wants to help people. And, uh, we're gonna miss you, brother. You did a great job. Looking forward to, um, mooching off all your daughter's high school games next year. I will be there with my dog. And, uh, I know we'll stay in touch. So, I thank you for your service, and you're just one, one of a kind, my friend.
Listen, Dennis, you, I couldn't have done it without you. You're, you're a good egg, and, and I wish you nothing but the best. And you're gonna lead the district for the next three months. You're gonna do a fantastic job, and, and, and we'll be looking forward to your daughters doing all that work up there.
All right. Officially, on behalf of the board, I want to present Mrs. Tedesco.
Thank you.
Got a giant red, uh, covering, not a red plate.
Dr. Sutter.
Uh.
And then...
It's too much.
We also have something from the board members. Mrs. Mayor?
Judy had the wonderful idea of asking everyone to send their notes of appreciation and well wishes.
That's awesome. It's like the best gift I could get.
And we have put them into a beautiful binder, because we know you...
That's why the, the idea came to me, because you complained about the binder you made that nobody looked at.
Well, you listen.
So now you have your binder.
That is fantastic. Come on, bring it in. Bring it in for the real deal. All right. I miss you, man. I miss you. I miss you, yeah. Tim?
I can't take it anymore.
Wendy, thank you.
I never did either.
So you're officially out now?
Yeah.
They won't let you go back.
Exactly.
They won't let you go back. Never remember a super leaving and having all of this emotion. Never.
And we've been through a few.
Thank you for the, thank you for the gift. I mean, open it now. New shoes?
I was gonna say, a pair of shoes!
I could use those. Running shoes, running out. Oh, wow. Look at that. You guys, you shouldn't have. Look at how beautiful that is. Oh, my gosh. Look at that. You guys shouldn't have. It's a beautiful coin. Look at that. Look at that. You guys shouldn't have. That's awesome. Look at it.
Don't put a battery in it. You don't need to, no matter what.
You guys are fantastic. Thank you. Thank you. Enough. Let's get back to the meeting. Enough of this emotion. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay. We're actually trying to do this meeting. We're gonna go back to the superintendent's bulletin, because we have not voted on any actual things. So, and this, right. So there were no questions on the actual bulletin, correct? So we can move to the secretary's report. Mrs. Tedesco.
Hi, everyone. On tonight's secretary's report, we have our regular business motions, including the approval of the lease purchase for the 25, 26 school year. And thank you, everyone, for always supporting me. Just wanted you to know that. Does anybody have any questions?
Okay, now we're on to new business. Mrs. Abraham, I believe you had something?
Sorry, I don't want to bring down anything, but I would be remiss if I didn't mention one thing. I just wanted to take a moment to express my deepest condolences to the families that have lost loved ones on the Air India Flight 171 that crashed on June 12th in Ahmedabad, Gujarat, India. And this tragedy has greatly affected the Indian communities all over the world. The London-bound Boeing 787 Dreamliner crashed seconds after takeoff, and it took the lives of 241 passengers and crew, with only a single passenger surviving the crash. And additionally, at least another 39 people on the ground were also killed when it crashed into a hostile building of a medical college. And I would like to offer my prayers for all the families affected by this terrible tragedy, and for the souls of all the victims that lost their lives. May they rest in peace. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we are up to the hearing of the public. So if there's anyone who would like to address the board, please come up, sign your name and address in the book at the lectern, and state your name for the record, and please address the chair. Each person will have three minutes to speak to the board. It would be helpful if you would like to address the board to please come up and sign in, so that you're ready when the first speaker is finished. As a reminder, we are video, video recording this meeting. If you are a student who wishes to speak, we ask that you not provide your home address, but rather give only the name of the town in which you live. If you are a parent wishing to discuss a specific matter pertaining to your child during this portion of the meeting, you may request that the board temporarily suspend the video recording. Alternatively, please consider speaking privately about the matter to the superintendent after the meeting. Speakers should refrain from using specific student or staff names in their comments, and are referred to Bylaw 168 for further information regarding the videotaping of our meetings.
Okay. Hi, my name's Jennifer Malouf. I have two kids in Mount Tabor Elementary, and I have another little one who will be joining. Yesterday, I went to the town hall meeting along with other moms. I met Mr. DeVito. So we're really just voicing our concerns about the growing, uh, class sizes, aging schools, and overall, just the type budget that the, uh, board has to work with. So we mentioned the board's, uh, April 24th minutes, um, where it says that the board received an MOU, um, from the township regarding the sharing of the pilot revenue. We know the details are done privately, um, but we are wondering if there is currently an agreement, uh, being worked on with the mayor.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to address the board?
Hi, my name is Carla Tucharali. I live in Mount Tabor. Um, I was, Jennifer also was at the board of, no, the town council meeting, uh, yesterday, and we spoke with Matthew afterwards for a little bit. And, um, I said to him, one small thing that I thought about for years, even back when I was teaching at, um, in Parsipony, I resigned when I decided to raise my children. And, um, I had said, I feel like it's not simple, because I know it's not simple, and it's a lot of energy and a lot of work taken in, but to redistrict the schools a little bit, to try and equal out, um, sizes in the classes. My children go to Mount Tabor. I taught at Eastlake, Intervale, Lake Parsipony, Littleton, and Tabor. When I did the elementary schools, I also taught at Brooklawn and Parsipony Hills and Parsipony High. So I've, I, I taught Italian, so that's why I was moved around so much. Um, but I, I liked teaching, and I maybe would like to come back eventually, but I'm not there right now. I'm more thinking about where my children are, and it would love to have them have the opportunity that I had growing up as well. Um, I went to Intervale, having a, a smaller class size and being able to have the students spaced out, um, more equally, if that's possible. I know that moving kids around is a big deal. I remember when Mount Tabor was reopened, uh, my brother was in third grade, I was already in middle school, but they kept the fifth and fourth graders at Intervale for those last two years, so that they weren't having a huge change. So even if you do think about redistricting, leaving the fifth graders where they are and rearranging the other kids the following year, those fourth graders being fifth graders will make new friends, and then they'll all be with their old friends again when they get to middle school. So in my head, it's kind of a win-win for everybody. It might be rough, and I know it's not an easy job. Um, but I just wanted to send the word, because when I said that to Matt, he's like, oh, you should come to the Board of Education meeting tomorrow at 6:30 and tell the, everybody about it. And I said, why don't you just tell them for me? And he said, no, no, I, I can't do that. So I wanted to, um, share my feelings and let everybody know that I, this is something that I think could be helpful. Um, and congratulations on your retirement. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Sutter, would you like to?
Yeah. I mean, Mr. Tchetti, you, you have a, a great idea, great suggestion. Tuchelli.
Tucharali.
Tucharali. I'm not, I'm not Italian, so I mean...
Let me teach you how I did my students. Tucharali. Go ahead.
Charali.
Close enough.
All right. But I, I wanted to thank you, and you have, you have a great idea. I think all suggestions and ideas are gonna be on the table in the future for trying to come up with a solution to some of our issues. Um, and I thank you for coming, and I thank you for suggesting it. Um, and Mrs. Malou, um, you asked if there was a, an agreement. We do have a, a, a piece of paper. We don't have anything signed yet. We don't have any, any signed in writing, but we have a memorandum of understanding with the, with the township and the, and the mayor's office. But we don't have any signed contract at this point.
But we are still working?
Correct.
On it.
Yep. I, I, I do believe that we're going to get something, we hope, soon.
Thank you.
Okay, now we were, now we are up to the roll call vote for the superintendent's bulletin, number 21, items 2 through 56, with addendum items 57 through 98 and read ins. Can I have a motion, please? Dr. Wright, in a second. Mrs. Abraham, roll call, please.
Mrs. Abraham?
Yes.
Mr. Barrios?
Read Q's on number 61, yes to everything else.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Mrs. Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Raye?
No on the comprehensive equity plan and yes on the rest.
Mrs. Chappell?
Yes.
Dr. Wright?
No on line O of 63, yes on the rest.
Mr. Chaffo?
Yes.
Mrs. Cogan?
Yes.
All right. There being no further business, I need a motion to adjourn Dr. Sutter's final meeting. Mrs. Mayor, the second, Mr. Chaffo. Fall in favor?
Aye.
Can we say no to that one?
I want to, but it's...
Motion passes. Meeting adjourned.
Well, you're moving on, guys. You're moving on. So, I really appreciate all of you. Thanks for the gift. I want to do this.